Hello.
Hey, required a password this time, is it? Is that because we're going to close session?
I just try to make it as difficult to get in, but easily accessible as I can.
Okay, I didn't have to put a password in before, so I wanted to make sure the public would be able to get on.
Yes, it's all included on the website and on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cheers, oh, you can't see it.
You've got your diet, Dr. Pepper, I haven't even gotten mine ready yet.
Let's do this again, I'm gonna log off my computer and start up and see if the microphone will work better.
Alright.
I'll be back. Alright, I'm back. Are you going to let me share screen? Krista? Hello?
Sorry.
Okay.
I had a vacuum cleaner going in my house. Um, yes, I'm going to let you share screen and hopefully it will allow you to do it once you go into closed session, I think that it will, but if not, if for some reason, if you need me to come in and share a screen and then duck back out or whatever, I can do that too.
Alright, my speakers and microphone are acting up still, darn.
I hear ya.
I know, but they keep going off every day.
Oh. How are you Dale?
Hey, I'm good, how's the knee?
It's good.
Good.
I told my PT today, I'm gonna be like Forrest Gump, I'm gonna run right out of this brace.
Well, I've got a guy that works for us that's got a knee thing coming up, so he's in a brace right now getting ready to have surgery.
Yeah, I go back to the surgeon tomorrow, so hopefully he'll, uh, easy, right now this, I'm so limited until six weeks of what I can do, so I'm hoping since I'm doing so well, he'll, you know, loosen up a little.
You're the kind they want, though.
Yeah, you're probably right. As I, my PT guys, at least if you're sitting down, will they let you go past 90 degrees?
Okay. Wow. Sounds painful.
Uh, not anymore, but it was.
Yeah.
First 10 days were no fun.
I'm sure.
Angela, did you figure out the wifi?
Um, Susan was supposed to call today, I don't know if she had a chance or not with everything else she was doing.
Okay.
But we're working on it. Yeah, you know, the auditor had trouble before when she was here, and, um, so clearly it's the wrong password.
Okay, well, I feel better then.
Yeah, no, I know, like, we tried every iteration we could. Do we have all the council members? I thought I saw Jeff, but now I don't see him.
No, I haven't seen Jeff yet.
I haven't seen Jeff and I haven't seen Sam.
Well, I'm wondering if they're having trouble with the password.
Well, the password was on the email.
I know, but...
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen the password.
Same for me, kinda confused me, but it, it worked from the email.
Alright, there's Jeff.
Okay.
RJ's logging in.
Alright, I think it doesn't have any problem, oh, we're still waiting on, um, Jason too, right?
Yes. Looks like we have everybody but Sam and Jason.
Bear with me tonight, my sound just keeps turning off, it happened the other day, it happens to Susan, Susan, we need to call BTG tomorrow and find out, it's only our two computers.
Okay.
It's not working for me.
So, Mr. Daley, how do you get that flag behind you? I couldn't find it.
So, so you can go on the internet and just type in any kind of image, and then you just save that, so you just type in flag images and then and you click on it, hit save, and it'll save it to your computer, and then you can use it for your background.
Nice.
Yep, you can kinda pick out whatever, whatever background you like.
Alright, it looks like we've got Sam Bradford, Cheryl Lyon.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Jason, yep.
Uh, not, unless he is Lulu.
Afternoon, everybody.
Hi, Sam.
Do I sound okay?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Getting irritated, my sound's gone off like four times already. Let me see if I can find Jason in here.
I just texted him.
Oh, thanks. Did you give him the password?
I will.
Thanks. 734649. Alright, so now I need to get back on. Krista, did you enable my share screening?
Uh, we'll do that right now. Alright, finish to take care of it.
Thank you.
Angela, I have a updated agenda.
Yeah.
That's a little bit different from this one, but, uh,
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll go by mine, and my only question is, I don't have the, uh, the verbiage for reading us into a closed session.
It should be on page two of the, the pages that I sent you earlier through email, Sam.
Yeah, I'm using the PDF that got mailed out, so I can't change it to...
Okay, I, I got it, Krista, thank you.
Perfect, you're welcome.
Oh, Jason's on, good.
Hello.
Hi, Jason.
How are you, Angela?
Good, thank you. Let's see, are you guys still seeing the agenda, cause now I'm not.
I am not.
Just seeing Zoom.
What's that?
We see your Zoom screen.
Why can't I, oh, okay, I'll close out of that.
Next time.
I see ya, there we go.
Angela, why am I looking at your screen?
Um, you should also be able to see the participant, I'm, I'm share screening so that we can, um, later on, I can show some reports, if you don't want this up here now, we don't have to.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I just figure in case any members of the public don't have their agenda.
Okay.
And reports.
I just, um, when, uh, there's a couple of guys that sound almost the same, and they, cause we're gonna make, uh, three motions, I believe, for approval of the minutes.
Yeah, so you know, if you can't tell the voice, when somebody speaks, they should have an outline, probably yellow around their picture, and that's how you know who's talking.
Good, okay, all good.
How do I get everybody else on the screen again? All I've got's four across the bottom. Since you put that agenda.
Uh, um, you may only see a limited few.
Okay.
But there's, at the top of that, there's different grids that you can put them in order or show the whole grid. And then you can arrow back and forth, but...
This is Jason Hamm, has, uh, Mr. Dijack and Mr. Rogers taken their oaths?
Yes, they have.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, I'm gonna, um...
Tara not coming tonight?
I'm sorry.
Tara's on vacation, and she let me know that she's not gonna be able to be on tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Thought she was gonna call in, but she's not.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to, uh, call the meeting to, uh, order, uh, the meeting of the Dayton Town Council Order at 6:02, uh, on June 8th, 2020, and, uh, welcome, everybody. Pursuit to the Governor's Orders Limiting Public Gatherings will be meeting virtually tonight, uh, and, uh, I would like to, uh, have invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance, please. Lord, we thank you today for allowing us to be together with town council and the citizens and share comments and for the betterment of our town, we, we come today in, in need of, in need and to be thankful of prayer for not only health and safety, but for strength and knowledge and understanding, and, and finally, Lord, we, we simply would like to thank you also and pray for additional, uh, gifts of conversation that lead us to a better place. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic, which is the stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. Uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, right off the bat, I'd like to welcome Bradford, Dijack, and Dale again, welcome, guys, glad to, uh, have us with you, uh, it looks like we got a lot to get to, but, uh, we'd like to welcome you to the, to the team, and, uh, we're, we are very, very pleased and, and happy to have you. Uh, I have a, uh, I have a change to the, uh, agenda that was given to me late this afternoon that, uh, asked to, for a motion to amend the agenda to include, uh, a closed session to discuss acquisition of real estate property for Mill Street, so I need a motion to amend the agenda to convene to close session.
So moved, Mayor.
Mr. Dijack? Need a second?
I'll second.
Rogers? Krista, uh, need a roll call, please?
Alright, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Ogrin?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Alright, so, uh, the motion is approved to amend the agenda to convene to close session, um, and that's gonna be done, uh, after the public comment unless someone corrects me. I now need, uh, one of three motions, I'm gonna have, uh, motion to approve the minutes for the budget work session of April 20th.
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, uh, need a second?
Second.
I didn't hear that. Who, who was the second?
I was second, Jeff Daley.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Uh, Jeff Daley, um, and Krista, we need a, uh, roll call, please.
Alright, I'm not gonna call everyone on this one, it would just apply to a few as were there, so, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Ogrin?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Alright, so we have the approval for the minutes of the budget work session of April 20th, uh, now we need, uh...
Can we hang on a second, so are there, I think it would be maybe a good idea to do a general roll to find out who's on the call as, as among council members, I can't actually see everybody.
Okay.
And, you know, I understand, I think Krista was saying that she was only gonna ask for the folks to vote who were actually there. Everyone needs to vote, you, you can vote to approve in it, uh, minutes when you're not there, you can also abstain cause you weren't there. But everyone does always need to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Then, Mr. Dijack?
Uh, abstain.
And Mr. Rogers?
Abstain.
Okay. Alright, so now we have approval of the minutes for the budget to work section, work session of April 20th, um, now we need a, uh, motion to approve the joint public hearing and regular meeting of May 11th, 2020.
Actually, Mayor, that one, I don't believe we're going to have a quorum two vote on tonight because there weren't enough members in place with Tara not being here tonight. So I think we need to put that one for a vote at the next meeting.
Alright, so the, uh, vote on the hearing and regular meeting of May 11th will be voted on, on the next meeting?
Yeah.
If we've got, if we've got Sam, myself, RJ, and Carrie, oh, Carrie would be able to vote, but he just would abstain?
Well, Carrie was absent from it.
I was not there.
Right, but if you voted, you'd abstain, that'd be four people, so you need four people that can vote yea or nay?
Out of seven, yes.
So, but you just said, Jason, that everybody can vote, so he can vote to approve it if he wants to, or he can say abstain?
Yes.
So if he abstains, we, we need a yea or nay, so an abstention is a no vote, so then what you're saying is somebody would have to, that wouldn't count as an actual vote.
Right, could, could we do an actual roll, cause I don't have in my notes who's here, and I don't think our record is clear as to how, what council members are, are present.
You can scroll across the bottom to see everybody.
Right, but I, I, I think our minutes need to reflect that we've taken a roll, especially in this circumstance.
Alright, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Dijack?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Ogrin?
Present.
Mr. Rogers?
Present.
Ms. Worthy is absent, and Mayor Lee?
Present.
Very good.
Okay. So, am I understanding that we can do a, uh, a motion for the hearing and the regular meeting of May 11?
Well, you can, but I think what you'll have is we've got six people here, two are brand new council members who weren't on council at this time. And one was absent, so, and, uh, you know, it's only the June meeting, it would be fine to defer this till July, but it's also okay if, if one of the three members who either wasn't a council member, or who was absent, they can vote to approve the minutes if they want to, but it's certainly something that could be acted on another day.
And I, I've read the minutes, I'm okay with approving them as long as somebody makes the motion, and the people that were at the meeting agree that there's nothing that needs to be changed.
Were our new council members present?
Yes.
Well, yeah, they're not.
They were both present.
Correct. Yeah, so, yeah, uh, yes, so they, they could vote to do this.
Okay, well, well, then let's, let's, let's vote on that, that's, let's have a motion for the, uh, joint public hearing and the regular meeting of May 11.
So moved, Jeff Daley.
I'll second.
RJ.
RJ, and Krista, let's try it once more.
Alright, Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Ogrin?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Alright, so, motion is approved for the joint public hearing and the regular meeting of May 11th, 2020. And finally, uh, we need a motion to approve the, uh, budget public hearing and special call meeting on May 27th, 2020.
So moved, Mayor Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, and, uh, we need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and Krista, we're gonna wear you out tonight.
Alright, Mr. Ogrin? Mr. Ogrin?
Sorry, couldn't get to the microphone button, aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. So, motion, motion approved on the budget, public hearing, and special call meeting on May, of May 27th, 2020. Um, that takes us to our, uh, action items, and the first one is the adoption of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Jeff, you wanna make that motion?
Uh, sure, sure, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget, um, as submitted.
Second.
I'm sorry.
That was Carrie.
Mr. Jackson, I need a second?
Yes, second, yes, sir. No, Mr. Daley made the motion, I seconded.
Mr. Daley made the motion, and Mr. Jackson, I'm very sorry. And we need a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Dajak?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
So motion approved for adoption of fiscal year 2021 budget as submitted. Action item B is the appropriation of funds for fiscal year 2020.
So what does this motion, what does this motion need to read ads?
If you look at the staff recommendation, I think you can make a motion that effective July 1st.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I guess effective July 1st, 2020, I make a motion for the appropriation of the $7,419,036 for use, for uses and purposes as generally outlined in the approved budget.
Is everybody following along with that on the, on the agenda? Does everybody see that?
Yes, but I would include that second sentence in the motion as well.
Right. And the treasurer is further authorized to transfer from the Water and Sewer Fund to the General and Capital Funds such funds as necessary and within the amounts budgeted for such purposes.
All right, so Mr. Daley is making a motion. I need a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackson? And Ms. Hall, we're going to set a record for roll calls tonight.
All right, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Dajak?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
The motion approved that council authorized effective July 1st, 2020, the appropriation of $7,419,036 for uses and purposes as generally outlined in the fiscal year 2021 budget. The treasurer is further authorized to transfer from the Water and Sewer Fund to General and Capital Funds such as necessary and within the amounts budgeted for such purposes. That was a lot. We're rolling along. Item C, consideration of transient occupancy tax ordinance.
This was also heard at the public hearing in terms of the amount that would be included in the budget, which was a proposed rate of 4.5%, which is consistent with the town of Bridgewater. We only budgeted 500 for this year because it's a new tax, and at this time, we don't have lodging other than Airbnb occasionally.
So how do, how do we monitor this? Are they supposed to let us know before they offer renting, or?
Yeah, so you're actually going to have, yeah, so they're supposed to be collecting once this goes into effect, July 1st, they should be collecting this tax and passing it on. We'll have to come up with a form. We will also be presenting to you soon an ordinance for short-term rentals such as Airbnb. When I discussed it with the attorney a couple of months ago, we decided because it can be a heated topic that we would wait until we get back together in July for public hearing for that actual ordinance, and that will regulate where short-term rentals can be included, what zones, and stuff like that.
Yeah. And Angela, as I understand it, too, I believe the Commissioner of the Revenues Office also has monitoring software to kind of scour the internet for listings and pull those and check them against Airbnbs and VRBOs and the like. That can help with compliance as well.
So this doesn't include, this does not include Airbnb's, this transient occupancy tax? You're saying we're going to do something different for that?
No, this includes that.
I think Angela was trying to speak.
Does, does, does the Airbnb, the short-term rental takes care of the Airbnb, is that correct?
It taxes them, yes.
Okay.
But I think we wanted to have some regulation with respect to them as well.
This just passes the tax on them, but then the regulation of them where they can be, et cetera, et cetera. That's the other ordinance, Angela?
That's correct, yeah. That's what we'll be bringing back. You know, some locality, and it's been, as you know from watching the city of Harrisonburg, a heated topic, but we will come back with a recommendation, and I have to go to Planning Commission, I believe, as to what zoning classifications could include Airbnb and what restrictions there might be in terms of traffic coming in and out, and that kind of thing. So, yes, you should see that next month. I assume we'll be back together next month. We will work on that.
And this is just, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
This is only adopting the transient, which we've already put in the budget, correct? Didn't we put $500 in the budget?
Yes, we did, yeah.
We have to prove this to be able to have that in the budget, and then we'll modify, or we'll work on the nuts and bolts at a later date.
Right, so that, that Title 3.2 that was in the agenda packet is what you're approving tonight in terms of collecting the tax.
This is saying, yes, we want the money. We'll make the rules later.
Correct.
Yeah, because right now, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to collect a tax. You don't have the rules laid out for them to apply.
Yes, you can. So as you see, the definition says a lodging place is any inn or whatever. What we need to do is now put in the restriction. Right now, we have no restrictions, and people have had Airbnb, and we haven't really restricted it. So, but now, if you pass this, we can collect the tax.
Okay.
And then when we come back with the other ordinance, then we can start restricting, if we determine we want to, what zones and how much traffic can come in and out, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So this does have the definitions that you see here.
So not more than 30 consecutive days?
Right, so, yeah.
So if it's after 30 consecutive days, it's considered something else? So it's going to be on their honor to begin with until we start finding out how many are out there. Then if we find out that they're out there, there's a penalty. If it's on their honor and they pay on time, it looks like they get a 3% discount. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, and we can monitor Airbnb and the other rentals pretty easily. I mean, we know where the houses were before. This has been going on, I guess, for a couple years before I was here, and we knew that there were some Airbnbs in there.
Right.
So we can monitor, we can also reach out, like Bradford said, to the state, but it's pretty easy to monitor here.
If we put in some different regulations, and there's an Airbnb in a place that is not going to be zoned for, then we'd have to have them stop doing that, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. So we'll have a permit, likely we'll have a short-term rental permit, and if somebody wants to, right, if somebody wants to have an Airbnb, they need to get approval ahead of time, and we can put the restrictions in.
Okay.
How many rooms or how much traffic. It's, as you know, a very heated topic, so we thought it would be best to, to deal with that when we can all be there and work through it.
Yeah, the VML conference a year or so ago, when I went there, they had talked about that.
Yeah.
Everybody's having to figure out a way to, to do it for their localities, depending how large or small they were.
Right.
Have you had, have you had any conversation with anybody that, that we know, and they know, we know, that they are doing the Airbnb about this to see what their feelings are?
I have not, but I, last time I looked, there were no active Airbnbs in the town limits. I know Shelley had some for a while, but she's out of town now, and I believe there used to be some in some, above some other businesses that are now monthly rental.
Okay.
I just Googled Dayton Airbnbs, and the only ones that are coming up are in Harrisonburg and Wires Cave.
Yeah, and then the Bed and Breakfast here. So, yeah, I mean, when I've looked in the past six months or so, I haven't seen any coming up. But like I say, I do know that the Thomas House wants to do a bed and breakfast soon, and I believe they'll have three rooms, and I would not imagine that would be a problem at any rate because they're in the business district.
Right.
It's the residential, certain residential areas that you don't want the increased traffic and, and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and also, we don't want to, you know, people to be buying houses to just rent out as Airbnbs.
Right.
I'll make a motion to adopt Title 3.2 transient occupancy tax to be effective July 1st, 2020.
All right, Mr. Jackson? Mr. Rogers said second. Ms. Hall?
All right, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Dajak?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
All right, with the motion approved to adopt Title 3.2 transient occupancy tax to be effective July 1st, 2020, that moves us to action item D, consideration of amendment to license fee and tax for itinerant merchants and peddlers.
Yes, as the report states, we've been through this before, apparently. It used to be $200 per year. It was amended at some point to be $20 or 15 cent per 100. What this does now, the way it's set up, is somebody could set up a one-day business on a business property owned by somebody in a festival on the, on the festival streets, and it would only be $20. They could bypass the festival fee. We have very few applications for itinerant merchants anyway, and so we're suggesting that this go back up to $200 per year so that it doesn't, so that it's fair to the people who pay their festival fees.
Does this include any zoning for, if somebody comes and buys a $200 fee or pass to come sell product? Does that mean they can drive a truck and just park it in a parking spot on the side of the streets? I mean, is there restrictions on where that can be?
Yeah, there are restrictions for peddlers and, and such in this. This is just a section that, that identifies the price, but part of the code tells you what merchants, itinerant merchants, they have to come in and get a business license. We have to approve it. And this is just a fee that they would pay.
Right, but during festivals like Dayton Days, if they pay this $200, they're able to set up on somebody's business property and sell during that festival?
Yeah, so that's, that's where the problem is. So there's, say, a property on Main Street that has maybe a tougher where a person come in. They're not allowed to set up on the street where the festival is, but if they have somebody coming in because they know there's going to be a lot of traffic, and they're up on the porch of the business or inside, or even in the yard, my understanding is we can't restrict what's going on on private property, but we can make sure that they have a business license to do so.
That's my question. I was wondering if there's any way we could write in that this itinerant merchant's fee applies to every other day except the days designated by the town on certain festivals that they are not allowed to sell, because it would, you know, reduce the integrity of these festivals. There are certain categories that you sell at at these festivals, and if you have somebody selling whatever.
And the attorney may want to speak to that. It was my understanding that we could not restrict yard sales and itinerant merchants as long, but we can change the fee. Is that correct, Jason?
Well, yeah, and I think that's, I've got the question. Mr. Daley, you know, we, there's another part of the code that provides that if you paid the, that the fee doesn't apply for Dayton Days and Rosebud Festival and a couple of other enumerated festivals in there. But, yeah, I mean, if you've got a valid business license or, or, you know, you're on private property and you've paid this fee, you are allowed to do what you want to do, which includes selling because you paid your 200 bucks.
So what about an individual that lives on those streets that is selling their own, like, you know, they got the yard sale on that day, you know, they're going to sell their own stuff. Does that have anything to do with this? Do they have to pay a $20 fee, or is that excluded?
You know, there are localities that have yards. Sorry, Angela, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
There are localities that have yard sale restrictions. I don't know if Dayton does. I think you can do that, can limit, for example, the number of yard sales in a given year, because obviously, if you have someone that has a yard sale in an R1 zoning district every three days, then they're really sort of running a business. I don't, I'm not familiar with Dayton does that.
My understanding from the staff was that we were told we couldn't do that just on festival days, that we couldn't tell somebody they couldn't have one yard sale on a certain day.
Well, that's true. Yes, you could restrict, for example, the number of them per year. It's got to be rationally related to governmental purpose of, and I understand you've got the purpose of trying to keep your festival together and intact, and that's a, a good purpose, but I, I'm not sure that you, I don't think that you could say thou shalt not have a yard sale on Dayton Days.
That was my understanding.
To the business properties that we can, they have to pay.
Angela, is this, is it, to your knowledge, is this a, and then everybody else can weigh in also, is this, is this a big problem, or does it happen often? I hear of just a little bit, but not much of that.
It has happened on Dayton Days numerous times where people just set up a people's front yards and are selling items.
Or, or the alley down beside, say, Main Street Hair Salon.
Right.
That's, yeah. Yeah, this has come up, this came up last year, and it was my understanding we should wait until the budget comes through and do it all at the same time. But, yes, the Events Committee has asked several times. It's just not fair to the people who pay $165 to be in Dayton Days to see somebody selling something that doesn't meet the criteria of the festival in somebody's yard 15 feet away from where their booth is.
I agree.
And, you know, and there may be a solution to this. It's hard to, to think on the fly of how to regulate that. I understand the point. I hadn't been asked this question before now, and sitting here right now, I can't think of a, of an easy way to deal with that. There may actually already be something somewhere on your, on your books. But I see.
Angela and Jason, I just ask you too, I mean, is there, but there is a distinction between a yard sale versus itinerant merchant, correct? I mean, so, I mean, we could presumably consider those engaging in, you know, a yard sale on their residential property to be items that would have been found in their house, or likewise, as opposed to having a vendor come in and actually set up. I think that, that may be a distinction, and maybe something, I don't know if that's already defined, though, in our code.
Yes, yes. So we're not dealing with yard sales at all with this. What we're doing is saying if you're, if you're a legitimate business and you want to operate in the town for one day, your fee would be $200. This would also be like food trucks and such. Now, some localities where I've been before, it's $100 a day or $500 a year. So if a food truck comes in, and they're going to come in more than once, they would set up for 500. We don't really have a food truck ordinance that says where they can set up and stuff yet either, so.
So that was kind of my concern. If they pay $200 for the year, they can set up at Dayton Days, they can set up at Red Bud, they can set up at the Muddler on the business property. So, I mean, they're getting, instead of paying the fee for those three, they're just paying a $200. Is there, so there's no way we can exclude those dates of festivals on business property. They can pay $200 a year to peddle their stuff on days that are not part of our main events.
The question comes in that somebody has a business property already on Main Street, and they, and they end up kind of subletting their yard or their porch to somebody else.
So, so this will at least help that some.
Well, you know, one solution is to increase the fee, and my memory is that the Virginia Code caps that at $500, but I don't have the statute in front of me.
I can't hear you, RJ.
Sorry. So the solution was originally designed to prevent somebody from getting the cheaper option by paying the original itinerant fee and not paying the festival fee. But I think I missed how long this itinerant merchant license goes for, because I think Jeff's point is, you pay the 200, and then you don't have to pay the other two festival fees. Now you can do it every day of the year.
Yeah. Yes. So if you have a $200 per year fee proposed in this ordinance.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that is an issue that, yeah.
Yeah, $200 is better than $20. I understand. It'd be nice if we could limit when they can run out their porch. I know that I've heard the issues where the salon would run out their porch, so the business person would be making money in the town, and it doesn't get any of this income, and then there's someone selling, you know, something that has nothing to do with the festival, the vendors have an issue from, and then you hear about that from the vendors. So we definitely, this is a problem that needs to be handled. I just, you know, would like to get all of it done at one time.
Sure. So, sitting right here, Mr. Daley, I'm just looking at 58.13717. My memory is right, you can set this at $500. However, I think, Angela, we noticed it's probably at $200, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think you could do that today, but you could if you wanted to pass this and then come back and raise it later to discourage that behavior.
Well, but then also, like, the converse side of this is, we don't want to make it so high that people can't be itinerant merchants. And, you know, let's, let's say we want to have a food truck thing in the town, then nobody can afford that, that fee. And yes, they can then sell the whole year, but what's the demand for it outside of the couple of days that we do it, or whatever? So it's, it's a tough spot to be in.
So is it smart for us to adopt it today with the understanding that it may get adjusted or changed?
I think another thought is that there may be some other solution to this, you know, that has nothing to do with the setting of the itinerant merchants, you know, having to do with zoning or the town's control over its, over its own festival, that I am not familiar with, just sort of cold on this, at this meeting. So, you know, I think Mr. O'Gran makes a good point. If you set it too high, you're going to cause yourself trouble in another way. There may be another way, you know, for Angela and I to figure a way to stop that behavior.
Are we better off just to table this and revisit it?
Personally, I think it makes sense to pass it like it's written, because it addresses the issue that it was designed to address, because the other events aren't particularly merchant-based events, whereas the one this is intended to deal with is more of a merchant-based event.
Any other thoughts on that?
And I would note, too, I mean, this, because this is going with $200, this actually does play in our favor in that it is an increase, rather than adjust the, based on gross receipts or up to $200, which is already on the books. This, this gives us just straight $200. So I think it's probably a good, if nothing else, it's an improvement, and perhaps it's a starting point. Maybe we do land there as a compromise. It doesn't hurt, I don't think, to move forward.
What's your point there, Brad?
You know, just that right now, I mean, we can charge up to $200. That is, not to exceed $200 under the current code, but again, it's based on gross receipts. This, I think, sort of evens it out and actually dispenses them are at $200. I think it, to your point, RJ, is it's kind of a good balance. It discourages those that could kind of sneak in and pay, you know, a lesser amount, or, and it makes it a little bit easier administratively, but it also does not inadvertently, you know, make it too much of a burden for any vendor who does want to legitimately participate. And I just don't see a downside in moving forward today, with the understanding that we could certainly come back and raise that later, or, you know, and Angela and Jason mentioned, we could look at, you know, zoning tools as well to kind of couple with this fee.
I agree.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's have a motion to adopt the 3.1-10 as amended for inherent merchants or peddlers effective July 1, 2020.
So move.
Jackson, second?
I'll second. Jeff?
I agree, RJ.
I'll take it.
RJ, Ms. Hall, we'll go ahead and vote on that.
All right, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, so motion approved to adopt 3.1-10 as amended for itinerant merchants or peddlers effective July 1.
Next on the agenda is consideration of the amendment to the town code ordinance to adopt newly passed General Assembly actions.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this?
Yes, sir.
Angela, it sounds like your mic wasn't on.
I got it now, yeah.
Sorry, I defer to her. I didn't realize it was someone trying to talk.
No, I was, I was just trying to say, Jason, do you want to take this one?
Yes, I do. Okay. This is something that the council adopts, in fact, all county, cities, and towns adopt every year, because large parts of our code incorporate by reference things that are in the Virginia General Assembly's code, particularly, and the classic example of this is the drunk driving rules change every year. And so, we want to adopt these in there. Now, there is a law that says that we can do this once, and it's effective for all time. That feels very constitutionally strange to me, that you would do it in year one, and in year 10, you'd still be doing that. So we do this every year, and our other clients from my firm do the same.
I am certainly against a longstanding, we will always do it.
This is pretty routine in other localities.
Yes.
So we're re-adopting?
Well, you, you are passing this ordinance, re-adopting portions of the state code, but the state code is changing, ever-changing. And so, these are the state code provisions that have changed and will become effective July 1 of 2020, which is when general state law becomes effective, unless it's stated otherwise.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Sounds reasonable to me to do it every year, obviously, but.
That sounded like a motion.
Yeah, can I make a motion to adopt?
Mr. Rogers, we're, that's, that's going to count.
All right.
And can I have a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dijack.
Round the board, Dale.
And Ms. Hall, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
So, motion approved for the amendment to the code ordinance to adopt newly passed General Assembly actions. On action items, item F is the appointments to Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Ms. Lawrence, Colby Miller's expiration on June 30?
Yes, Colby Miller's term expires on Planning Commission on June 30. He had expressed to me several months ago his desire to roll off a Planning Commission. With that understanding, when council interviewed candidates for the vacant town council positions, they asked each candidate if they'd be willing to serve on Planning Commission. Several agreed. Council then suggested that Robert Seward would be appropriate. He did agree that he would be interested in that. So, that's one spot. You also have Zach's seat. So, the town code says that one member of the commission shall be a member of the council. And so, we need to fill that position, too. And I don't believe there was a recommendation. I know in the past, Mr. Jackson has exhibited interest in that. But then we also have Bradford, who is a planning director. So, that's up to you guys to decide who, who would fit into that position.
Sounds like he'd be a great addition.
Oh, I was going to suggest Kerry. I knew all the time for eleven, so I have at it.
So let's give it to Dale.
There you go.
I'm pretty sure Bradford and Dale have been a little meeting and out lately. They have been through a lot of meetings and oriented.
They have, and they have, and a lot.
I promised them things would slow down, so don't ever walk, unless-
I think I'm going to leave town just for, if your promise is good.
It's initiation. It's okay. I get it.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So, Brad-
No, go ahead.
So, Brad, with your, your professional role, if you were to be in this position, would that create, because one of the things we had talked about in the hiring process was, how hard would it be to separate out, you know, the things you need to do professionally versus this? Do you feel like being in this role would make that, those opportunities that would be difficult would come up more or less, or are they different things? I don't know if I know enough about the two different roles to understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, for the most part, we're talking about local planning and zoning-related matters, which do not, which the county does not get involved with. You know, larger-term issues, the only thing that would really come up is like an annexation or something like that, in which case I'd probably, you know, I'd tread lightly and consult, and, you know, but I would have to deal with that here on council, too. So, I would say for the most part, it probably would not conflict. But as I mentioned, I am certainly happy to let, share the wealth and let others join, too, if there's an interest, so.
So do we have to? We, we, do we appoint two tonight? Do we have to do both?
Well, Zach's is currently vacant. And so, his, whoever fills that spot from council would begin effective tonight. And then the other term begins July 1. So it would be better to appoint somebody tonight, but you don't have to, I guess, unless the attorney tells us we need to get somebody in there.
Well, what's the current, do we, does the Planning Commission have a quorum currently?
Yes, there's, yes.
Well, if there's a reason to delay, you can, but if you can act tonight, that's, that's good, too. One less thing to do the next meeting.
It seems silly to kick it down the road, but if, if we're not certain what we want to do, then that's what we should do. I think the Colby spot makes sense, because we talked to him about it. And if, if the council members want to think about it a little bit more, then, then that's appropriate. But I think the other one is a bit more simple.
Yeah. And just for reference, I mean, I'm happy to take it on if, you know, the council role, if others do not. But I, at the same time, I don't want to overstep here, and certainly, like I said, you know, Kerry, if you're interested, I have no qualms, you know, setting aside, so just, or Dale, likewise. So I'm fine either way. I will defer to the wisdom of my colleagues here.
But have, Rob Seward was interested in going on to the Planning Commission, so really what we're talking about is who's going to be that council liaison.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, in addition to that, there's a Board of Zoning Appeals that expires this year, and that's Timothy Bocock. He did express a desire to continue to serve, but I believe, even if he gets reappointed, we still have to send that to the courts, don't we, Jason?
Yeah, the circuit court judge actually appoints people to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I've never had a judge not follow a locality's recommendation. So, you know, y'all appoint someone to the Planning Commission, or folks, or one or two, whatever you're going to do tonight, or none. The Board of Zoning Appeal, you make a recommendation to the circuit court to appoint whoever it is, or reappoint whoever it is.
You have three separate motions, three separate recommendations there at the bottom of the report.
Right.
And the first one is to appoint Robert Seward to the Planning Commission for the term beginning July 1 and expiring June 30, 2024? So are we at a position to do that?
Yes. I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Seward to the Planning Commission for the term of beginning July 1, 2020, and expiring June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Second?
I'll second that.
So, Mr. Rogers? Ms. Hall, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
All right, so the appointment is approved for Mr. Seward to the Planning Commission for the term beginning July 1, or immediately, and expiring June 30, 2024. And I'm still unclear on the appointment of the council member.
It sounds like Bradford wanted to do it, so.
Bradford- I think we've been, we've been hemming and hawing. I think it makes sense for him to do it. I think he's-
He clearly, clearly had experience.
So I make a motion to appoint Bradford Dijack as a council member to serve at the Planning Commission for the term beginning June 8, 2020.
Second.
And Mr. Jackson, the second. And Ms. Hall, with a roll call vote, we can continue this hazing?
All right. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Reluctantly, aye, but thank you.
And Mayor Lee?
You could have said no, and it wouldn't have mattered. You'd have been outvoted, so.
Your fate would seal.
Mr. Dijack had no, no idea he was going to get in this much trouble. So, is it, so is it a, are we in agreement that we'll just recommend to the circuit court that Mr. Bocock be reappointed?
I will make that motion.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. Was that RJ?
Yep.
RJ and Mr. Dijack, second. Roll call again, please, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Gran?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, so, we were approved to recommend to the circuit court of Rockinham County that Timothy C. Bocock be appointed to town, to the Town of Dayton Board and Zoning Appeals for the term to expire June 30, 2025.
Mr. Rogers and Mr. Dijack, it generally doesn't take us that long to get to the staff reports, but here we are. Angela?
That's me. So soon. So my report is, sorry, page 21. Couple of things to add. The CARES Act funding is going to be coming forward to localities. The money goes- The money goes directly to the county and it's over $7 million that the county will receive. I reached out to the county administrator a couple of weeks ago and we, all the town managers in the county got on a conference call with the county last week to talk about the funding and how much will get passed through to the towns. The county doesn't know yet what will get passed through. There are certain requirements that you have to meet. So it can be used for any equipment, office equipment, anything that we had to buy because of the COVID-19 thing. So respirators for the police department that we bought, Plexiglas that we bought for the office. Those kind of things can all be reimbursed. There is, and I believe a lot of localities are coming up with creative ways to use that. You can't use the money to, to offset town revenue. But it does appear that we can come up with some creative programs to help businesses offset some of their lost revenue through incentives and projects like that. So I will let you know what we're going to get. Right before I got on here, I saw that Bridgewater had sent out a proposed formula that I haven't had time to look at yet. So definitely things that we spent money on that are directly COVID-19 related will get reimbursed for. But we may also be able to do some creative programs. With that in mind, I have scheduled a business conversation meeting on Zoom, the same business kind of meetings that we've been having, only I invited all licensed businesses that are licensed and located in Dayton to join the conversation. It'd be this Thursday at 6:15 on Zoom. It's not on the website yet, but it will be tomorrow. And just kind of get some feedback from them about where they are with their businesses and what would be most helpful when the town, what the town might be able to do to assist them. And if some ideas come up that would qualify for this funding, we certainly will look at that. Otherwise, everything's in my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lawrence?
I had a question regards to the financing for the water plant. To hold a finance committee meeting before the July meeting so we can discuss the different options we have and the conditions that go along with those options. So we can make a, an informed decision and maybe a recommendation to council on how we should move forward. So we're not losing month after month waiting on something to happen.
You said you want a finance committee meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to have a finance committee meeting sometime in late June when you've got some answers back from, from some local banks. I know I sent you in March 19th, a quote from state, Kansas State Bank that does municipalities. So hopefully you'll have a couple other proposals. Like you said, using a, a different lender that's not government related. Then you don't have as many stipulations on what you can buy, when you can buy, when you can start. That's the thing, but then you kind of give the flexibility of not paying for anything until, until the project's done where these other, I'm sure these other loans will be more of kind of a, if you take down a draw, then you start paying interest until it gets taken care of, but.
Yeah, and I did, the infrastructure committee met last Friday and we went over this a little bit too in terms of the pros and cons of the different financing. Obviously, if you go with VDH, they're very well versed in this. They've helped a lot of localities. So I think they'll catch some of the issues that we need to be concerned about. So there are pros and cons for, for both, but yes, I, and I know that Infrastructure Committee wants to meet again before the July meeting as well. But yes, we can schedule a Finance Committee meeting to look at that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. And you said that VDOT's got the final, final plans for Mill Street Project?
VDOT had reviewed the final plans, got back a few comments. There was one other thing they were needing from Royce. Apparently it did not get to him last week either. I sent out another request and I saw VDOT and Royce going back and forth today. And I believe they hopefully have all the information that they need now. So I reiterated again that this is a top priority, that we're fighting getting this done by during the construction season. We're also waiting, what's not on there, we're waiting for the final information from the appraiser so that we can start getting the easement done. And that's why we're going to go into closed session tonight.
Yeah.
It has been very frustrating. I know you guys are frustrated. I'm very frustrated.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
It's not for a lack of trying, I can tell you that.
Yeah. Yeah, and to that end, as Angela mentioned, we'll, Infrastructure Committee, Dale and I, we'll certainly meet again beforehand to go over the final bids and everything, all the work there for the Mill Street Project. That's a priority.
My hope is actually if we can get this out to bid in the next couple of days, that we can call a special called meeting just for the purpose of approving the contract before the July meeting if everything else is in order, so.
Let's do that while we're still zooming rather than having to all come in.
But I've promised that a number of times and it hasn't come through yet, so. All right.
All right. Thank you. The treasurer financial report, Ms. Smith?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I think this, well, first of all, let me apologize. This budget versus actual report that you all received, I obviously sent to Krista before I'd filled in all. So there's a bunch of numbers there and I, so I apologize for that. And then there were some discrepancies in, in some of the numbers. So I am, I'm perfectly working on figuring out what the discrepancies are. I did talk with Councilman Daly this morning about that. And it appears that a couple of things happened, but I will, I will email out a revised budget versus actual. So I do apologize for that. In the staff report that you all received, there are some items for consideration there at the bottom of the report. So the first one there is the approval for staff to pay the BBNT Bank franchise tax refund of $18,330 from the general government miscellaneous fund this fiscal year. That's, I'm not sure Bradford has been, if you all have been updated on Angela, did we explain to them what happened with that? I don't think we did.
Is that what the prepay was and then they left, so we had to pay it back?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, the thing that the state, every locality is having to pay for. And then when we went through the budget, you may recall that when we looked at our projections for this year, it appeared that we would have enough money in that fund to go ahead and pay it this year rather than next. So that's what was in the final budget that you guys got.
So, so Susan, this is a, so this is something we have to decide on tonight, vote on tonight? Is that what the?
I think that Angela and I have decided that it would be a good idea to go ahead and get your, your approval to, to pay that out of this fiscal year, just so it's, it's in the minutes. And if there's any questions about that later on, we can.
That was, that was the recommendation of the Finance Committee as well.
Okay, and, and is there any other comments or questions? And we'll go ahead and, and get a motion on that.
Just for the record, it, it was not a budgeted expense, obviously, because we didn't know about it. But it also doesn't meet the criteria of having to amend the budget. So that's why we're just asking for your approval.
Okay.
I think it makes sense to pay it now too with not knowing what the, the budget's going to look like potentially with, with all the COVID junk, if we've got the money.
We currently have the money and the budget to cover this, that's why we had recommended to go ahead and do it now.
Yeah.
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 I would agree with that.
I'll motion to pay that.
Okay, RJ. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
I'll second Dale.
Mr. Rogers has a second, so we need a roll call vote, Ms. Rogers?
All right, Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Ogrin?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and I, and I don't know why I call you Ms. Rogers. I think your name is Krista Hall.
Yeah, I thought that was a little odd.
So, okay, so we, so we approve, so we have approval to pay BBNT the franchise tax refund, $18,330. And Susan, on the, on the next one?
Yes, Mayor, the staff request that council approves to carry over the following funds for incomplete capital projects. And the first one is the Greenway, the 30,000, scheduled completion by June 30th, but maybe delayed a week or two.
Okay.
That's for the fencing and.
Right.
Originally, there was a commitment for them to have it done by June 30th. They're in the process of moving their office and some other delays came up. I reminded, when they scheduled it, I reminded them that they had agreed to it by June 30th. So they're going to try, but it may be the first week in July. So just in case, we may not need to carry it over, but we may need to. And, and we need it in the minutes that you approved carrying it over.
Okay.
So what we, yeah, so what we used to do in this case would be if there wasn't money spent during the fiscal year and those projects needed to be done, that money would be spent in that year. It would then just go into reserves and be added to the next year's budget. And then that money would be taken out to cover that. So do we have an account set up? These are monies that are not going to be part of the, the budget we just approved. They're going to be monies from the previous year's budget. Do we have accounts set up that this money is held outside of the 2021 budget?
So that's why we're asking for your approval to carry it over. And Susan can address it, but we did talk to the auditor and she suggested that what would happen when you carry it over is that we would add it to the budget that's just been approved and continue to spend it that way. Because we didn't know, we thought at the time that this money would be spent when, you know, the budget cycle takes several months, but that is what the auditor recommended that we do.
So then, so if this is going to be part of the 2021 budget, then we would have to amend that budget because this is going to be $245,000 for all these projects?
No, because this money, these are capital projects. They've already been approved. But oftentimes a capital project takes, doesn't hit exactly in the fiscal year. So we have discussed with both Ann and the auditor that this is the way to do it, that you have already approved this in last year's budget. It was already approved. We just haven't completed the projects fully. So we just, you guys vote to carry it over. And then we, accounting wise, account for it that way. But it's, it was not part of the approved budget.
So that's my question, accounting wise, is this money going to be moved, just left in the checking account? Moved to the reserves when it's spent, gets taken out of whatever accounts we're holding this money? What?
No, we always, we, we always keep money in the checking account. We don't just keep what's budgeted. It's, as you know, money comes in and out every single month. So this will just, and the financial reports that you'll see will tack this on. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. There are three, in, in the accounting portion of it, there are three accounts already set aside to those. They're on, well, they're not page numbered, but you'll, you'll see them there. Oh, actually, you all don't see that. That, we have accounts set up for those already.
Okay, but it won't affect the next fiscal?
No, I mean, like Angela said, they were already approved for this, this fiscal year. They'll just carry over to the next.
Okay.
If you all approve it, that's up to you.
Does that answer your question, Jeff? Because it sounds like she answered exactly what you said. There, there is an account.
There is an account for this to be placed in to be, so when you're looking at the, the budget for this year and the financial statements, you're going to be spending $245,000 less than what was approved. And then in the next financial statement for next year, we're going to be spending more than 255,000, 245,000 that was approved.
But it will be footnoted in the financial statements at the end of it, both years.
And that's also, that's also what we discussed at the, the last Finance Committee meeting as well, was the CIP. So we're going to be having money moving forward for those projects that we know that we're going to do each year. If we don't finish it this year, we'll be able to finish that project with that same revenue or that same outlay for the following year.
Right, and that's the capital accounts I was asking about. Because we haven't, those are things we were talking about doing for this year, this next year going forward, but we hadn't done those in the past. So to show that capital account is going to have $245,000 sitting in it specifically for certain projects. Right? So do we, so those capital accounts do exist that can be carried out for years down the road?
So we're going to keep them in these same line items and just show that we've carried them over rather than moving them all over to the 15 capital fund is what we've been advised by the auditor. And this happens quite often with grant projects that go over one year or the next because you don't know when the money's coming in. So this is, this is how it was recommended for us to proceed from the auditor.
So it's not going into capital accounts, it's just going to be carried over from one line item to the next?
Right, so the 15 funds, those first two are already in the capital fund, the water line extension. And we will talk to Finance Committee, but technically we should be setting up a capital account specifically for water and sewer. That'd be probably Fund 25 going forward, but we'll talk to Finance Committee about that because we shouldn't be mixing our capital funds. But we should have separate capital for water and sewer. So we will talk about that. That's an accounting thing. The budget still stands the way that it is. And this will be footnoted in, like I said, both financial statements.
So we need a motion to approve the carryover for incomplete capital projects.
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, second?
Was that Mr. Jackson or?
I made the original motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we need to specify the amount that we're carrying over?
We should have, we should have an amount.
I mean, I mean, if we're carrying over all four of these, you're looking at $245,000.
Okay, what it says in parentheses and what the motion should include is we're only carrying over the amount that we need to carry over. So the Greenway project, if it gets done before June 30th, we won't carry over anything. The Mill Street project, we still have some expenses hopefully coming in from the engineer and stuff. So whatever we have left on June 30th is what will come over. We don't have those exact amounts now because we're not at the end of the fiscal year. The water line extension will be the full 65,000 and the advertising will probably be the full 25,000. But that's why it's worded the way it is.
So we can't put an amount, we just have to say incomplete?
You can say up to all those amounts right there if you want to.
Up to 245,000?
Well, I would say up to 30,000, up to 125,000, up to 65 and up to 25. I wouldn't group them all together because they're all from different funds.
Okay, so Mr. Jackson, your motion was for the Greenway project, up to 30,000. Mill Street, Street project, up to 125,000. The water line extension, up to 65 and the advertising.
25,000.
Up to 25,000.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now I need a second. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Dijack? Okay, Ms. Hall, I need a roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Ogrin?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Approval to carry over to incomplete capitals, Greenway project up to 30,000.
So Angela and Susan, for my, for our finance meeting that we'll schedule here in July, I'd like to see the accounting on that and how it's going to work. It just makes me nervous. I've not been a part. not been a part, I don't know, I can't figure out in my head how this works. And we've had some issues on accounts and accounting and changing accounts, and I wanna be able to track in my head to know what, where the money's going, how it's gonna be put aside. And then these are two different years, and then we're gonna kinda use the money that's there, not separate. So, yeah, I'd just be, see how that kinda works out.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Chief Trout.
Release report, sir. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Before he's my council report, should we take a look at it? If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Trout? Ms. Lawrence, Public Works?
The Public Works report is on page twenty-six. Are there any questions on that? I will say that we've experienced, well, we've been using a maximum amount of water. We could've bought from the county last week, but they had some special needs as well. We could've also sold to them if we would've had extra money. We did end up buying some water this weekend just to get caught back up, yeah. So, Russell and Adam did give the new council members a very thorough tour of the water plant. So, I think they have a much better idea of how it works now and what the advantages are gonna be for the upgrade. And that will certainly help in this kind of situation where we could get water going through the plant much faster. So, Cargill is still running pretty heavy on Saturday, and they will, I think he said, a total of thirteen weeks or so. So, we, for another month or two, they'll be running pretty heavy on Saturdays.
So, that show up as an increase in revenues for this year? Are they using more water than they were planning on?
Hopefully. We'll also have a few expenses for the water that we had to purchase, but yes. Yes. Which makes it a little bit harder for us to justify our CARES Act funding when we're probably the only locality that's...
Right.
Increasing revenue during this time.
Okay, thank you. That's enough.
We are losing, we are losing some money.
We had to buy one point five million gallons of water, though.
Yeah, we've had to buy water, so, all right.
So, did we lose a building in grounds tech? Did somebody leave recently?
Yes, Addison left last month, I think was in the report. So, Seth took Addison's place. He's normally seasonal, but he's been in that position. We're gonna advertise this week. As you may recall, there wasn't enough money in that line item for part-time staff. So, Seth's kind of absorbing that now. We are gonna advertise, and we will put that if somebody has some landscaping or horticulture experience, that would be a big plus. But if not, we're still planning on doing some contract with landscapers. We will be getting the rock out of the flower beds here pretty soon and some of the bushes and adding some color.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Community Development, Ms. Hall?
I do not have anything to add to my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything for me.
But you do have something to add to your report. The Muddler has been canceled officially.
Correct.
And we are issuing refunds through run sign up. We just have to write them one check, and they issue refunds straight to people's credit cards that they registered with.
How many registrations did we have?
One hundred and twenty-two.
And we posted on the Muddler Facebook page, and people, of course, some people are bummed, but so far, everybody understood why we were doing it, and nobody's complained about the cancellation. The city of Harrisonburg, or the Harrisonburg Police Foundation was also bummed, but understood.
Understand some of the area fairs and some other things are getting canceled, too.
So, there's a historic tourism or historic Dayton tourism sign. Was that put up on Friday?
I am not sure if it went up on Friday or not. I will look into that and find out.
It says Route two fifty-seven, the intersection Route two fifty-seven and Route eleven. Where...
That's the sides that are coming off of eighty-one that direct people to turn onto eleven and then turn left onto Oakwood or whatever, and one of them disappeared.
Oh, so Oakwood's also considered Highway two fifty-seven?
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if that's right.
I was wondering where that, I know two fifty-seven butted into forty-two here, but so that's that Oakwood Drive that goes over to eleven. There's a sign there?
I'm not sure if that's, Krista, do you know?
I do not know. That was something I inherited from Mike's report from last month. So, I just took it from his report, but I will try to find out a little bit more and get some information to you all about that.
Thank you, Krista.
Certainly.
Anything else on the community development? In the committee reports, I got to sit in with Tara, and we sat in with Angela and the only report is that we're kinda on hold because we're waiting on, waiting on our instructions as to when we can open back up and, and do things. And obviously, we just talked about the Muddler, but I'll be sitting in with Ms. Worthy and getting as much information as I can and pass along as much information I can. I'll be on that committee with her moving forward. But it's tough to plan when we don't know what the plan is. Mr. Daley, Finance?
I do not have a report.
Mr. Dajak?
Good, thank you very much. Yeah.
By the way, I appreciated your conversation today. That was, you know, welcome the call. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, well, and as Angela kind of alluded to, I think Mr. Rogers and I, we had quite the tour, quite a, we had a combined treatment, water treatment plant tour, as well as an infrastructure committee meeting Friday. So, I will say that we had excellent tour guides, and, you know, Adam should get, maybe he had a second calling as a tour guide. And I give him a lot of credit, being a new dad, and also being on a call at two AM. He still graciously told us everything we needed to know about that water treatment plant. So, him and Russell tag teamed that. It was a great tour. So, I recommend it for anyone who's got some time to spend there. It's, they made it as interesting as you can for a water treatment plant. But we did, we did cover a couple of items. Ms. Lawrence mentioned already, we did discuss the Mill Street project, water treatment plant upgrade. But specifically, two other items we were discussing were the CIP, which we'll look forward to working on. I know Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Smith are working on in the meantime. We will be, again, convening another infrastructure committee meeting in near future. We'll go over some of those priorities before they reach council. But we're also taking into consideration some of the sidewalk and street prioritizations, and we'll factor that into the CIP. And I think that's a great opportunity to really plan out some of our priorities for the next five years in addition to the, you know, the four capital projects we're, you know, funding in this, in the FY twenty twenty-one budget. So, it was a great, great meeting, I think. And I appreciate Mr. Rogers joining me, and that was, so the two rookies are getting initiated and drinking from a fire hose, but we're looking towards continuing it.
And I appreciate your relationship with Mr. Kamara from VDOT. That certainly is gonna help us, so that's gonna be good.
Absolutely.
Anything, anybody, any questions or anything to add? Parks, Recreation, and Beautification, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Welcome, sir. Welcome again.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we have not met as of yet, but we are going to meet prior to the July meeting. So, I have had discussions with Tara and Angela, so we're planning to move forward. Hopefully, I'll report then.
Thank you very much. You're surrounded by a lot of talent and experience. So, you'll be, you'll be great, and we're, again, we're grateful to have you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Gran, Personnel?
No report.
And... Mr. Jackson, Police?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Police Committee met this past Sunday with Chief Trout and Ms. Lawrence to review, clarify, and make modifications to the police policies. We met for three hours. It was passionate, collaborative, and we had great discussion. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to RJ and let him expand on that, and then come back to me.
Yeah, so, obviously, we've all been seeing what's been going on, and it's been very difficult to watch. And I felt called that, being in the positions that we all have, we needed to take the opportunity to make sure that that all got prevented in our town. And so, I did a little bit of research on policies and some of the things that have been advocated for through these national conversations that are going on, and found some information from an organization called Campaign Zero on some changes that they recommend for use of force policies, as well as some other things. And then got some information from Justin about our department's policies, and was really impressed with them, looking at them through that lens. So, I was glad to report that from the beginning. But there is some room for improvement, and so that's what a lot of the meeting was, was talking about what improvements need to be made or could be made, or people feel comfortable making. And it was a really collaborative conversation, and it went really well. And, you know, we spent three hours talking about pretty much everything, from our use of force, our body cams, our training procedures, what they're trained on, how often it happens, our disciplinary things. We talked a little about funding structures. So, really, we're looking at everything critically, not because we have to, but because we should, just to make sure that we have the best department that we can have. And I really appreciate Justin's commitment to that and openness to that conversation. But yeah, it was really good, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Gran. And, you know, Chief Trout came to that meeting incredibly prepared. He sent out all the policies beforehand for us to review, and then when we got there, he had a slideshow set up that really went through everything that we had, and we, again, we had great discussion. Chief is, definitely wants to make sure that we are protected and the citizens of Dayton, and that the Police Committee is also there, and we will continue to have those collaborative conversations. And instead of meeting quarterly, we're probably gonna have to start meeting monthly so we can get this stuff resolved, because stuff's gonna be coming at us fast and furiously, I'm sure. Thank you very much for everybody's participation on Sunday.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that came out at the end of it was that, that we don't want Dayton to make changes because, you know, the state tells us to. We wanna make changes because it's the right thing to do. And frankly, there aren't, there aren't too many that really need to be changed, but we wanna be ahead of it and be an example for what a town can do to respond to the things that we're all seeing. And I'm glad that everybody on the committee is open to that.
You know, the next category is for the mayor and the council, and I just wanna use it, take a second to thank Kerry and RJ and Justin. Nobody had to tell you guys to have this conversation. And it's kind of, and I wanted to compliment you guys on being proactive and getting together, doing that on your own, and having some, some good spirited conversation. And it's kinda neat being a part of a town who's a little ahead of the situation instead of a little bit behind it. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for going ahead and doing that. I talked to Kerry a little bit today, and it was good conversation, but I wanna compliment you guys on going ahead and doing that before someone asks us to. So, it doesn't surprise me at all, but just wanted to compliment all three of you for getting together and having that conversation. So, I appreciate that personally. Anything else for Mr. Jackson or Mr. O'Gran? Other members of the council, any comments?
Yeah, I think I'll follow up on that in this area, and I know I shared this earlier today. You know, in that vein and in that light of what we've all been seeing, I think it's important that we take the time to acknowledge the things that we are seeing and take the opportunity that we have to use our voices to amplify the voices that have not been amplified and, in fact, silenced. And I have a motion that I'd like to make, so I'm gonna read that. So, "Whereas systemic racism exists in the United States of America, whereas systemic racism perpetuates structural inequalities in the nation's schools, workplaces, courts, police departments, prisons, housing, healthcare systems, and every facet of life. Whereas the United States of America is in the midst of a critical dialogue that is central to the fabric of the nation's values. Whereas protests in every state and across the world have called on leaders to hear their voices, be it so resolved that the town of Dayton hereby affirms that black lives matter." And I'd like a second.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, RJ.
Thank you, RJ. We probably ought to have a roll call, though. Ms. Hall?
All right, Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mr. Rogers?
Hi.
Mr. O'Gran?
Hi.
Mr. Dajak?
Hi.
Mayor Lee?
Hi. So, approved as written. Thanks again, RJ. Anything else, guys? Any other comments? Do we have, I'm sorry. Do we have any unfinished business? How about...
I think, Mr. Mayor, there was a council comment.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Who, I'm sorry, who was it? I thought there were two. Anybody?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I think I caught my mic. I'm fine, but thank you.
Okay, that's all. Okay. New business? Are we doing public comment?
Yes.
On the raise your hand feature? Ms. Hall, do we have anybody? Do we have anybody standing by?
So, if anybody would like to make a public comment, they can either send Krista a chat down there or go to the participant section and raise their hand, and she'll recognize them.
Not seeing any chat requests or raised hands at this time.
Okay. At this time, we need a motion to go into closed section, closed session under Section two point two, three seven one one, A three of the Code of Virginia to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, more specifically for the Mill Street project.
So moved, Mayor.
Dajak?
Second.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Do we need a roll call vote for this or can we do all?
We need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hall.
All right, Mr. Rogers?
Hi.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Mr. Ogrin?
Hi.
Mr. Dijak?
Hi.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mayor Lee?
Hi. So Ms. Hall, you'll move us into a closed session?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right.
Don't forget to turn on my share screening again if you can.
I will do that.
Thank you. So she's going to invite you to go to the breakout room?